Okay, it's four oh three. I think we'll have Thomas join us when he can. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Mansaneta Planning Commission to order. First item of business is approval of the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, subtractions? Revisions that we need to make? We got Bert's name spelled correctly. That's a good thing.
Right.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I move to approve. This Frank.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Yeah, aye, aye. Okay, great. Thank you. Um. Next item of business is audience participation. Do we have a? Count on our audience members today?
Well, just a second. We have twenty-six participants, and that includes the planning commission and presenters.
Okay. Um, anything the audience members would like to say that's not related to this? Hearing today?
Yeah, Karen, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody for showing up. It's a big deal to us. All right, um, first item, a real agenda item is the transportation system policy planned. Um, but you've got an update for us?
Do you want me to give the update, Leila?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This Scott. Um, well, Leila had got it to me and asked me to make some revisions based on the last meeting because we had some questions. Um, basically for the attorney, for ODOT, and for the Fire Marshal. And I wasn't able to get through that all in time to get it in the packet. So I guess what I'm asking is if we can um move to postpone that to our next planning commission meeting.
I have no objection. Any objection?
No.
All right, we'll put it on January. Thanks. Okay. Um, the meat of today's issue is a public hearing um on a design review. Let me get to my. Oh geez, tell me I didn't print it out. Give me one moment, please. Got it. Okay. Um. I'm Karen Reddick Yurka, Chair of the Mansaneta Planning Commission. Um, I'll be presiding over a land use hearing today. Excuse me, this is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of a request for design review by bearing architecture for the city buildings um to be built on Mansaneta Avenue between Division and Classic Streets. And I think you have a, an address, is that right? Six fifty-five Mans? Is that right? This hearing is now open. The decision to approve or deny this request will be based on the design review standards listed in sections four point oh eight oh, four point oh nine oh, and four point one three seven through four point one five six of ordinance ninety-five dash four. Uh, and the standards for the commercial um zone, C one zone, listed in section three point oh four oh of ordinance ninety-five point four dash four. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report, and we'll hear them all at this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to the request. Um, also note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. This case will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, then followed by public comments in favor of the proposal and those opposed to the proposal. Commission, staff, and participants may direct questions to those who testified. Um, and finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal if needed. Generally, the applicant's entitled to twenty-two minutes to make the presentation. All other speakers should try to limit your comments to three minutes. Um, and as usual, avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed your thoughts, it is perfectly fine to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you've sent in a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are already part of the record. And for the record, Scott, do we have any written comments?
Uh, Karen, I did not receive any comments as of the start of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on this uh land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. If such a request is made, it will be up to the commission to determine if the hearing should be continued to a date and time certain, or if the record will be kept open for submission of additional evidence. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. Without uh that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case.
Now, Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, uh, any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this application?
Still no hands raised.
Okay, and then these are the questions for the commission. Are there any declarations of conflict or bias? Ex parte contact or site visits by any members of the commission? And let's start with Phil.
All right, no, no conflict of interest, no bias, no ex parte contact, and I have visited the site.
Okay. Frank, how about you?
None of the above.
Okay, John?
No, uh, no contact, none of the others. Um, I've obviously been on the site.
Okay, no conflict or bias? Okay.
Sorry, no conflicts or bias.
Okay, um, Bert, would you unmute yourself and?
Uh, yes, no conflicts or bias or contact, but I have visited the site on multiple occasions for the farmer's market and even saw the Christmas tree stuff, which was good.
Okay. How about you, Lee?
You're muted, Lee.
That better?
Yes.
My space key evidently didn't unmute me. Um, no conflict of interest, no bias. Obviously, many visits to the site over the years.
Okay, and Thomas?
Uh, same.
Okay. For my part, I'm saying I visited the site a million times. Um, I have no conflicts of interest or bias and no ex parte contact with the applicant or the city in this case. Um, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias?
Uh, Karen, I have no hands raised, but I'd also like to point out that Thomas is now, has been logged into the meeting.
Oh, thank you. Let's make sure that we record that in our minutes. Uh, okay, we're ready to proceed. Um, who, who would like to give the overview of this development? Is that Chris?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name's Chris Keen. I'm the architect working on the project. I'm wondering if I can share my screen in order to uh walk you through some slides.
You should be able to share now, Chris.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me see if I can do this without creating. Uh, let's. If you can tell me if you can see uh kind of a site plan image on the screen.
Yes.
All right, great. Um. All right, well, uh, thanks for the opportunity to present to you all tonight. Uh, I know everyone's probably fairly familiar uh with this project. We've done a lot of uh public outreach along the way. Um. As you know, the site is here uh by Mansaneta Avenue and Division Street. Um, it's a two point six six acre property uh and uh sits, as was mentioned, in the C one zone. The use that we are uh bringing to the site is permitted outright. Uh, it's a, it's allowable use outright. Uh, the project that we've designed, uh, I think you'll see meets all of the standards described in section three point oh four oh uh with regards to things like setbacks, building heights, et cetera, um, FAR. The building sits kind of facing Mansaneta Avenue, and we have divided uh the parking into two lots. We're required to thirty-eight spaces as per the code that parking is divided into a larger public lot uh to the west and a smaller um staff lot to the, I guess that's the northeast of the building. Um, there's twenty-five spaces in the west parking lot, eleven in the staff lot, and two in a enclosed garage space within the building itself. Uh, all of the site stormwater will be managed on the site. Uh, overall, actually, we're decreasing the amount of impervious area on the site with this project. Uh, and that impervious area will all be managed with an infiltration system uh that has an overflow connection to the public uh storm sewer uh Division in Mansaneta. Uh, the site uh itself incorporates, as I said, the building itself, two parking lots. All of these parking lots are connected directly through a series of concrete pathways. Um, there's a direct connection to Mansaneta, to the front of the building as well. The front entrance to the building is oriented towards Mansaneta. And there's kind of a generous planting buffer uh in front that you'll see here in a moment in some, some renderings. Um, the intent here was to kind of push the building down to this edge and leave as much of the site left over as possible for future development. Uh, there are some existing trees on the site up here on the northern part of the site and a little bit on the west. All of those will uh remain uh and not be disturbed during the process. Site lighting itself is limited very uh to a very little amount of path lights here along this back entry point along uh the entrance from the parking lot and along the path to Mansaneta Ave. Those will be bollard-type light fixtures. Um, and we're, we're designing around what we understand as a future ordinance that's, I don't know if it's been brought into uh practice yet or not, but it's a kind of a dark sky ordinance. Uh, we'll be providing some bicycle parking in the back, kind of staff bicycle parking, if you can see my cursor here, and then some for the public in the front as well. Oops, the building itself uh will be clad in uh vertical cedar siding. Uh, the roofs proposed are a dark uh powder-coated standing seam metal that has a kind of a low reflective quality to it. There'll be some board and battened cedar in specific areas marking entry. Uh, and the building is intended to be ADA compliant throughout. Um, the site itself uh also uh is designed to be barrier-free and accessible for uh people of all abilities. Um, around the building in the planted areas will be using trees and shrubs that have been selected for their kind of appropriateness uh for the growing conditions out on the coast. Um. Mostly native and adapted plant material, uh, and there'll be no supplemental irrigation. As I mentioned, the building is a single-story building made up of kind of two volumes. This larger front volume on Mansaneta Avenue uh in which City Hall uh offices will be to the east, the council chambers to the west. And then uh behind that is the police station uh part itself connected by an exterior trellis. The building scale and massing has all been kind of conceived to fit into the local context and, and kind of recede as much as possible and limit any negative impact on the adjacent neighbors. Uh, as I said, front entrance to Mansaneta here, uh there's a small lobby off of which there's secure entrances both to the council chamber room to the left here on this image and to the right to the city hall staff offices. This is a view also from Mansaneta looking kind of toward the west. As I mentioned, the police station is, is located in the volume in the back side of the building in its own separate volume. And that is kind of accessible, whoops, uh, via a covered pedestrian entrance, uh, uh, sorry, a covered trellis that connects the lobby uh to the police station itself. Um, one thing I, I didn't mention is in this, if I go back to this floor plan, you'll see a couple of public restrooms here. These restrooms obviously are for uh visitors to the building, but they will be able to be open uh after hours uh for public events that are being held, like the farmer's market that was mentioned. So that kind of back entrance will allow uh access to those toilet rooms um without providing access to the rest of the facility. The next few views are really just to get a sense of, of how this building fits into its context. This is a view across Division on Mansaneta Avenue looking toward the east. In our conversations uh with the Fire Marshal, there was a request made not to provide fencing around the parking lot. Um, and so what we're proposing is to provide a visual screen using vegetation. Uh, I think you see some notice of that in the staff report. But again, you can see the building kind of breaks down into smaller volumes. If you compare it to the, the masses across the street, we're well within the kind of uh this, the typical massing of what we see in the neighborhood, kind of a residential scale. This is up from Division looking uh to the southeast. Again, back towards the, what you see in the, here is the police volume. And then this is kind of across the green space, back towards the south, towards the building. And again, kind of the overall shot, you can see in the background here, the staff parking lot with police cars, public parking to the left, all of these connected via accessible pathways to each other and to the building entrances. You get a sense here of the bollard lighting that is kind of marking those paths. Uh, and the kind of the main entry point with some uh monumental signage and a flagpole out at the street. So I don't know if this is a time for questions or if we just move on to the next thing, but that's kind of all I wanted to share with you all today.
Um, okay, thank you very much for that. Um, why don't we have uh the staff report? And if it's all right, we'll reserve the questions. Um, then, because some, some of our questions might be addressed in the staff report. Um, Scott, are you wanting to do that?
I sure am. Um, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Whoops, hold on a second here. Do this. There we go. Okay. All right, um, my uh staff report was pretty long. It was about eight, nine pages. Uh, I tried to, I turned it into PowerPoint presentation. It's a lot of words. I'm hoping everyone had a chance to read through it. Um, I will be covering every piece of the staff report. I think it's good that we go through and make sure everyone understands each piece. So uh I apologize ahead of time, but I will be doing quite a bit of reading from the slides. Um, I'll try to skip over things that have already been said and make this more ef- most efficient. And please, if there's any questions as I'm going through, feel free to stop, raise your hand. Um, and we can do that. We do not have to wait till questions to the end if something comes up that you don't want uh to miss. So I'll just jump right in. Um, we already went through this, but Chris is um the applicant on behalf of the city, of course. Uh, we already discussed the property location uh on Mansaneta between um Division, off Division. Um, just the air photo of it, we already looked at this as well, but this is the current site. It looks like this air photo happened when the farmer's market was happening, so that's kind of cool. Um. Uh, parcel size, we already discussed as well, two point six six acres. Um, the farmer's market's held there. The old buildings are still there. Taken out. Um, adjacent land uses, property to the west and north and east are Zoned R two, which is a residential zone, and land to the south is C one, uh, commercial with existing commercial businesses. Um, the applicant has requested to design review uh and approval of a single-story city hall and council chambers building as well as a police station, as we've discussed. Um. We already, uh, Karen went over the criteria, but that's what we're going through next is sections four point oh eight oh, four point oh nine oh, four point one three seven through four point one five six of ordinance nine ninety-five dash four. Uh, and also the commercial standards for C one zone listed in section three point oh four oh. So those are the uh decision criteria for this. Um. And I guess I should back up, but uh one thing is the planning commission serves as the um design review board. So that's, that's what this, you are acting as today is the design review board. Uh, in terms of the application summary, um, the proposed building will locate on the south end of the property facing Mansaneta Avenue. Um, it's about seventeen thousand, just over seventeen thousand total square feet of impervious surface. Um. And it'll be about four thousand five hundred twenty-nine square feet less than the site currently has, which is uh twenty-one thousand six hundred fifty square feet of impervious surface. So there'll actually be less impervious surface with the future development of the city hall and police station. Uh, we mentioned this already, but thirty-eight parking spaces are required and they are, and, and proposed. Twenty-five will be located on that western side. The other eleven will be behind and two in the garage. Um. I don't, I think this might come up, but um the, the, there's going to be eight spaces which would be to the back of that parking lot, which will actually be gravel. Um, so the entire parking lot, the large parking lot of the twenty-five spaces will be majority paved with a, a few spots in the back that will be gravel. Uh, the primary exterior finishes vertical cedar siding with board and battened at the entry, as mentioned already, um, with metal roof. Uh, well, here's the part about the, the parking. The twenty-five parking lot at the west of the site has access for Mansaneta Avenue will be served by an existing driveway. Proposed eleven parking spaces beside City Hall will be served by an eleven-foot-wide access road. Now, this is important here. It will be built to street standard, so eventually Classic Street could become, uh, once it becomes a full street, that will be built to city standards. I thought that was important to note. Uh, perimeter landscaping will be used to shield the western side of the site from any illu- illusion. Illum- illumination obstructions from the parking lot. So that was that discussion about the um the, the landscaping shrubs to block lights to the neighboring residential. Uh, we sent notice on the application uh on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, twenty-five days in advance of the hearing. We're only required to do twenty-day notice, so we met that requirement. Uh, no comments were received at the time of this report, and as we already discussed, we have no written comments uh received prior to this meeting. Um, section four point one five oh requires design review for all new construction in commercial and mixed-use developments in the commercial zone. And as we know, this is in C one zone, so this action is, this, this is subject to public hearing and review by the planning commission, which is why we're here tonight. I'm going to skip through these because Chris did a really good job of explaining the site plans and how they look. He went through the, the, with better pictures than I have, so let's remember what his looked like rather than relying on my fuzzy ones. So thanks for going over that, Chris, but um I really do think it helps to give you an idea of what the building will look like when it, when it's complete and uh fitting into the surrounding neighborhood and commercial uses. Okay, so that was a summary. Now we're getting into criteria and findings for the design review itself. So section three point oh four oh uh contains the development requirements for the C one zone. So I'm going to essentially go through and make sure, you know, when we get a planning application, we have to go, go through and make sure it meets all the requirements of the underlying zone, which is C one. So the following summarizes the items uh applicable to the request. Uh, the proposed building meets the minimum set by requirements of ten feet in the front yard and five feet on the side yard. Um, the building official determined the building's proposed height of seventeen feet, two and three-quarter inches, does not exceed the maximum twenty-eight feet, six inches height limitation in the zone. So we're meeting uh height requirements quite easily. Uh, at least ten percent of a hundred fifty thousand square feet site must be landscaped. Uh, the site plan identifies twenty-two thousand square feet of landscaped area along the western side yard portion of the site. An additional twenty-one thousand square feet of landscaped area along the east side that were remaining primarily in its natural state. So it's either landscaped or natural state. Um, there's about seventy uh seven thousand five hundred square feet of landscaped area in the front, which you saw in the renderings. Um, and just that area alone actually um will give us that ten percent requirement. If you just look at that ten-foot area in the front of the uh site. As you know, it's, it's a very large site, so there's lots of open space and lots of uh landscaped area and natural areas. Um, signs, marquees, and sidewalk covering shall not extend more than ten feet from the building or more than five feet over the sidewalk, whichever is less. Um, no part of the building violates either of those uh limitations. Submitted material includes stormwater plan and calculations. Um, that was mentioned also by Chris. Uh, the plan appears to direct some drainage towards an existing storm drain improvement on Mansaneta Avenue, and that's only for overflow. The design is designed to capture most of the stormwater onsite, but in case, and we also verified that that is okay, that it would drain into uh the existing storm drain if necessary. Uh, the ordinance requires a design review which is addressed in the following sections of the report. Uh. Wait, where did I go here? Uh, submitted, uh, here we go. Flora ratio of point six, oh six five is far below the point six five uh maximum allowed, so we're, we're fine with flora ratio. Uh, sign must conform to section four point oh seven oh of the Mansaneta zoning ordinance. So the applicant may address this as a separate permit. There is no um permit as, as part of this design review application for a sign, but if a sign will be uh put in place, we have to do a formal uh uh permit for that sign. So based on the findings, um, the building conforms to all of the provisions in the C one zone. So there was nothing that we found based on the application that would make it not allowed in the C one load zone or need a variance or something like that, so it does conform. All right. Let's keep moving through. If I'm going too fast, let me know. I'm trying to get through this quickly, but I know uh we need to make sure we hit everything. So section four point oh eight oh establishes the city's parking requirements. Uh, at the time of new structure is erected or the use of existing structures change in a large off-street spaces, loading areas, and access shall be provided and set forth in sections and to less greater requirements or otherwise established. So the subject lot will contain newly constructed single commercial space on the site contains more than five thousand square feet area. Therefore, parking is required for the commercial space. No surprise there. Um, a driveway will also need to be provided for this city hall and police station. Again, thirty-eight spaces are provided, two ADA spaces will be provided and thirty-six uh regular spaces. Two of the thirty-six ADA, non-ADA spaces are proposed to be located in the garage, as already mentioned. Uh, eight of the twenty-five spaces located in the parking lot in the western port of the site will be gravel. I mentioned that already, but that's the back section of that lot. Um, section four point oh eight oh of the Mansaneta zoning orange allows for off-street parking to be either paved or gravel, so we're okay that it's not all paved. Uh, there's also a proposed electric vehicle charging station in the, in the parking lot to the western portion of the site. Uh, we use this to calculate the spaces. Um, it's not too important to go through the numbers, but essentially the, the city hall and council chambers required about twenty-seven point four four spaces. Uh, the city hall was about uh required about six point seven nine, and the police station was about three point five nine. So it came up to about thirty-eight spaces, which I mentioned already, but based on the findings, the proposed parking lot area meets the total required parking spaces given the mixed uses, so they're meeting that requirement. Yes?
Hi, okay, um. Have, have you determined the need for parking other than as required by the code? What I, what I mean is, was there any study of how many parking spaces are needed for the business that will be conducted in the building?
No. There was not a parking study um done to determine that. We, we basically have to go off what the code requirement is. Now, this is minimum, so we're meeting a minimum spaces. That's not to be said that there couldn't be, you know, if you wanted to, we could put more spaces in.
No, I, I actually want the opposite. Uh, I, I'm wondering, and is that? Is that possible to reduce? Can we waive the parking requirements so that there are fewer spaces required?
Uh as it sits now, we have to require what the code says, so we have to make the make this. The ci- ci- city hall and police station has to have at least thirty eight spaces based on our parking code currently.
There's no possibility of a variance.
The applicant could ask for a variance, yes. So yeah, you there that that would be the avenue for uh reducing the total number of spaces from uh thirty eight.
Uh Scott, if uh for instance, the gravel was uh dashed in rather than. Uh actually developed as potential future if needed, is that one way where variance wouldn't be needed?
You mean if we did, if we did uh more of it is is not paved?
I think you've got a certain number of gravel parking spaces.
Yeah, we do.
If those were just uh uh those spaces weren't developed as gravel, they just were landscaped. But it was noted on the site plan that those could be future if uh if the demand showed there was a need for it.
Uh yeah, unfortunately, we have to actually constru-. As part of the permitting, the 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 development, you you have to actually create those spaces. They can't just be platted on the on the map, so they would actually have to be gravelled in. More questions, John?
Yeah, I had a uh sort of a rebuttal to. To uh Bert and Tom. We are gonna continue, I assume, to have the farmer's market on the open piece of land behind. The uh city hall even after it's constructed. Um and there is, as far as I know, no uh parking requirement for a farmer's market. And if there is, I I don't know where to find it in the code. Um I definitely have some issues with the parking lot, but I think in terms of the number of spaces. While I am a hundred percent in favor of reducing any paving and. Uh parking, et cetera, I I I have a feeling that we're not gonna be too far off in the long run. Um but I would be in favor of reducing the amount of pave versus uh. Uh gra- uh versus uh pervious surface, so you know, gravel or whatever.
Who who have, uh Frank?
Oh yeah, I would be careful about trying to dismiss some of these parking spaces. If you think about how many people are involved in a planning commission meeting with the city staff. And if you want people to come to these meetings or a city council meeting. You know, you're gonna eat up eight, ten, twelve, fifteen spots without anybody participating. You have a hot button issue that comes up and you got twenty cars that are coming in because they want to come to the meeting. It's not like, I I don't see thirty eight spaces as excessive.
Any other thoughts or comments on that before, yeah, yeah, Bert?
Oh, I just had a question on the number of bicycle spaces uh in the T S P plan, we uh need to have eight. Spaces, is that how many are being provided?
Um I I will ask Chris how many are provided on that one, I would note though that unfortunately. Or fortunately, I don't know, however you look at it, but we that the T S P is not yet adopted, so we can't use those requirements for this. Submital, but Chris, can you answer that one?
Uh I'll do my best, yeah, we we understand that it there's not a requirement currently. Um but we've been asked to add some, so I I think at the moment we're assuming a half a dozen. But certainly that's an easy number to change, we've got plenty of space, so if there's a, if there's a. Uh a number we're trying to hit, we can certainly accommodate that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the city to get in front of the T S P plan, so uh can do the numbers, but I think it'd be eight spaces.
I think you're right, and um I think that would, that makes sense if we're looking at two spaces, one for staff in the back and one for public in the front. You have fo- you know, two sets of four bike parking areas.
Yeah, that's easy for us to accommodate.
Great, good, good, good question. Uh who's next, Tom?
Uh yeah, I didn't, I don't wanna sidetrack the presentation, I have some more thoughts and concerns about parking, if we're gonna. Discuss them later, that's fine, if if now's the time.
Okay, yeah, let me get through the presentation, I think then.
Okay.
Uh we can have it be part of our larger conversation as a group, so we'll note that we'll discuss parking and maybe some other things that that come up as we go through this.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I'll continue on. Um in terms of section four point oh eight oh off-street parking requirements, um. It states except for parking to serve dwelling units, parking and loading areas adjacent to or within residential zones or adjacent to residential uses uses. Shall be designed to uh minimize disturbances of resident residents by direction between the uses of a sle- site obstructing fence, no. Not of not less than five or five feet or more than six feet height, except for where clear vision is required. So this is the uh kind of the compromise that we came up with, the proposal does not include fencing to the west and the southwest of the parking lot. Uh the code says it needs a fence there to block it from those residential uses across the street. Uh but we did receive a letter from the fire chief. And um basically saying that the fence could potentially inhibit access in the event of emergency. And the applicant proposed a solution to plant site uh obstructing vegetation in lieu of the fence. Um hopefully you're able to see the letter from the fire department that was attached to the packet. So as a condition of of approval, which you'll see later in the presentation. I I think what we'll require is in lieu of that fence, we will plant the. The vegetation to block those lights and um obstruct the vision that way.
Can I make a comment before we move on from that?
Yes, please.
Um I believe that we included that um fence requirement where. A commercial use is directly adjacent to residential, so. Um you know, backing up to, and in this case, there are streets or at least rights, you know. Uh rights of way on all the sides adjacent to the building, so I don't think that I'm too worried about the fence, I. Um e- except for um the screening of some sort on the hmm east side. Um because that is directly adjacent, I I mean, I guess it's closer to directly adjacent um. To this site, there are some homes back in there.
Yeah, um and I I think you're right, when we first looked at this. Well, my first reaction was, well, you could, you could make an argument, you know, how do you interpret adjacent, right? Is it right next to, is it, because if you think about it, there's probably forty feet of grass between the parking lot and the street, then the street, then the residential area. Um so I think we're just going the extra mile here, trying to make sure that we at least put some sort of sight obscuring vegetation there.
Yeah, I I'd like to s- see what what's, I didn't look for this earlier, but I I just wanted to look at the. The east side of the property and see how that looks in comparison, you know, adjacent to the residential uses, I know there's a commercial use right, right now.
Okay, yeah, there is, yeah, there.
Let's look at that.
And I think it's a, it's a zone, right, because the the houses that are adjacent are in the C one.
Exactly.
Okay.
So really, it doesn't actually apply to the east side, it only applies to the west side, because there's, it's, it says residential zone.
Yeah, except for being good neighbors.
That's true, that's important.
Okay, move on.
Okay, I'll keep going. Provisions to section four point one three seven and four point one four two address site ground reviews, the use of fill for structural. Uh elevation parking structures in the front. In the front yard and matters regarding trees. So this application, the findings are, this application process are consistent with provisions in these sections. Which describe the seminal requirements, significant fill is not required in construction of this building, in fact, there'll probably be fill removed. Uh proposed parking spaces are located in the rear yard and side yard of the main city hall building. While the front yard contains vegetation and landscape material. There are existing trees onsite, however, additional plantings will be placed along the perimeter. Um so section four point one five oh identifies the purpose of the designer view process, so. This is really why we have to do this process of the design review. Uh the purpose is uh to provide design standards for commercial mixed use development in the commercial zones. Uh designer review provides a set this aesthetic judgment. Over development projects in order to maintain their you you unique character by buil- by keeping buildings to human scale and reflecting natural beauty of the city settings. So when you're thinking about your review, think of all these things. Uh it's to encourage the traditional style of the Pacific Northwest and protect the viability of commercial zones, the standard provide. For or provides for originality, flexibility, innovation, and site planning and development. And encourage development where structures, use areas, and artistic expression and site elements are integrated in a manner that is harmonious. Within the site and within adjacent properties, designer review criteria shall be applicable. To all new construction, alteration of site improvements, or exterior alterations of commercial mixed use developments in C one, L C, and R four zones. So that's the purpose of this section. Um the findings are that section four point one five oh seeks to determine whether proposal maintains the unique characteristics of the. Of the community, the exterior will be primarily finished in vertical cedar siding, trim pieces will include wood and metal features. Contrasting board and batten siding will locate at the main entry of city hall. Uh on balance, while the design is original, it generally fits into area and does not. Offer a finish or color scheme that significantly significantly contrasts with other structures. Uh in the vicinity, so our findings are that we feel that it does fit within um the char- the unique characteristics of Manzanita. Um and in section four point one five. One uh the applicable definitions, while section four point one five two identifies where a designer view is required. Uh the definitions are applicable to the designer review process, but do not by themselves establish a criteria. Finally, as previously noted, designer review is required as a proposal involves construction of a new building. So section four point one five three outlines new review procedures, the city hall. Uh held a pre-application meeting with the applicant on November eighteenth, and applicant submitted the required materials. Further, the city mailed notice to the area property owners and complies with the applicable provisions. Uh four point one five four outlines the purpose behind the design review criteria. Uh states that the design review criteria are intended to provide a frame or reference for the applicant in the development of the site. Building and landscaping plans and to provide the city with the means of reviewing the proposed plans. These criterias are not intended to be flexible requirements, nor are they intended to discourage creativity or innovation. The criteria do not intend to specify particular architectural style. Further, the designer review board is not authorized to approve projects which do not adhere to specific development standards. Preview uh provided by this ordinance. So in terms of, we can't, we're not, we're basically not making judgments on any of the zoning regulations in terms of height setback. And things like that, it's really just a design review. Okay, we're getting close, I promise. Section four point one five five contains the specific design criteria, each item. Is reviewed below, so I'm gonna go through all these numbers, and these are the criteria which we do with our design review. Um so number one, in terms of setback from the street or sidewalk, the design creates a visually interesting and compat- compatible relationship between the proposed structure and surrounding area. So the finding for that one is that the structure will be set back ten feet, as you saw, there was uh uh pri- prioritizes pedestrian focus. Space fronting from Manzanita Avenue. Uh this is the entrance to city hall, uh surface with concrete paving, and generally the setback space complements the building style and proposed finish. Um number two, the design incorporates existing features such as rock slopes and vegetation. So the findings on that one are, the design works with exact exist- existing natural slope of the site, which is generally flat. Uh the building's main interest is oriented towards the street with public-facing functions located on the main entrance. The existing conditions of this lot includes two large structures and a cul-de-sac driveway, there is minimal natural features. Uh occurring such as rocks or vegetation on the site, but there are several mature trees on the site that will be retained. Site will be cleared of the existing buildings to accommodate the new structures, and parking will be included. New trees and shrub plantings installed on the perimeter of the building. Uh number three, where appropriate, the design relates. Or integrates the proposed landscaping slash open space to the joining space in order to create pedestrian pathways and or open space that connects. To other properties, I think, you know, for the most part, that was clearly shown in the site plan, but uh the front includes that, those generous. Pedestrian plat- pathways, the rear also has multiple pathways, as was already mentioned, there'll be outdoor seating areas. Uh the proposed design indicate in integrates to the street, and the pedestrian access points are located to south of the lot where the site meets Manzanita Avenue. That makes easy pedestrian access to the building and also includes pedestrian walkways to the west. Um it can be, the building can be easily accessed from the rear. Of the lot by a pathway running parallel, as was noted, could be used potentially when the uh. Farmer's market's there and maybe the bathroom's open. Uh side and rear yard landscaping will be integrated into the joining space that also enhances the aesthetics to create a welcoming environment. Um number four, the design gives attention to the placement of storage or mechanical equipment so as to screen it from view, that's one of the other criteria. So where possible, uh electrical and mechanical equipment is placed in dedicated utility rooms within the building, so a lot of that's hidden inside. Uh any exterior mechanical or electrical equipment is strategically placed to not be vis- visible from Manzanita or Division Street. Or from public areas of the building. So there was some effort there to screen those. Number five, all functions, uses and improvements are arranged to reflect and harmonize with the natural characteristics or limitations of the site and adjacent properties. So the findings for that one are that the site improvements work with the existing terrain to optimize the natural slo- slope draining stormwater to the southeast and west. Where infiltration trenches manage the stormwater. The layout and relationship of the roof line, including the transom windows and glazing along the pedestrian walkways, provide. For facade transparency as well as permitting more daylight in the city hall. So uh findings were that um those uses improvements are arranged to reflect and harmonize the natural characteristics. Okay, we'll keep on going here, section four point one five six contains the decision criteria for evaluating architectural and landscape design, each. Item is reviewed below, number one, the design integrates and harmonizes with. The existing and proposed development with existing surrounding and future allowed uses, the standard shall be applied in a manner that encourages village design. And visual diversity within development projects surrounding the area. Corrugated siding is prohibited and does not harmonize with the siding used on most existing buildings. Findings, the building is generally consistent in finish, color and style with the majority of the buildings in the vicinity. Structure utilizes primary cedar siding, as we mentioned, we already talked about the board and ba- batten. Um and it will be in contrasting color to provide visual diversity that delineates delineates the main entrance. Um I think that the building arrangements respond to the surrounding neighborhood and focused business activity at the front. The Manzanita Avenue side of the site, and police station in the back. Uh number two, the landscaping design acknowledge acknowledges the growing conditions for climate for the climate zone. And provisions are made for uh survival and and continuous maintenance, the landscape design shall include the use of several. Of local native species of trees and shrubs. Uh we already kind of went through that, but that is the proposed native trees and str- shrubs, it won't be um irrigated. Um they indicated that native species and adapted plants will be selected. Uh proposed species include a whole host of that we already discussed earlier. The site will not include an irrigation system, as I mentioned too. Uh they will be drought tolerant and fit with within the maintenance uh of the property ownership. Uh number three, uh the minimum lot area required to be landscaped uh for commercial and mixed use and non-residential. Located in the front and side yard portions of the lot adjacent to the front. Or street side yards, not within the foundation footprint or rear yard. Living plant materials should cover fifty percent of the required minimum landscape area, for corner lots, at least twenty five percent living plant material required for this section. So as I noted before, about eleven thousand five hundred seventy five square feet of landscaping is required. Of which fifty percent or about five thousand seven hundred square feet must be landscaped with plant material. The site contains fifty one thousand nine hundred fifty two square feet of landscaping, uh so each frontage exceeds twenty four twenty. Each frontage will exceed twenty five percent of the plant material requirement, because it is a corner lot. The setback area in the front of that's gonna be landscape is a total of seven thousand five hundred square feet. Just that area alone meets that twenty five percent requirement, so we're by far exceeding any landscaping requirements. Uh the grading and contouring of the site and onsite drainage facilities shall be designed, so there's no adverse effect on neighboring properties or public right of ways. Again, we mentioned this again, but any of the grading and contouring of the site was designed to keep stormwater onsite. Uh with those inf- infiltration uh trenches to support water retention on the site and prevent flooding on the neighboring properties. Uh plans also include necessary calculations suing compliance with city standards, so we did make sure that. That does say, to say that, that the plans include the calculations for that stormwater retention. Uh number five, uh the design avoids um. Uh number five, uh the design avoids um monotony and provides visual interest by giving sufficient attention to architectural details and design elements. So the findings on that one, the building's one level, uh multiple buildings connected. Uh and different differentiated materials at the main entrances. Creates visual interest, and this will enhance pedestrian pathway and decorative dark-colored window frame elements. So we felt like they met this criteria. The design adequately addresses the pedestrian nature of the commercial area and places structures in relation to sidewalk and open space to foster human interaction. Again, we talked about this a lot, but it's a, it's really pedestrian-centered and it provides a connection directly to Manzanita Street. Uh open space on the lot to the north provides clear connection to adjacent commercial areas. Projects, pedestrian pathways and outdoor space provide opportunities for human interaction. Uh we talked about the lighting as well. Lighting is non-industrial, non-invasive, and in character with uh that can to reach to the village's character. So the plans uh are primary, the lighting is primarily doorway entrances and along walkways near the outdoor seating. The lights are commercial in size and style, but downward facing. Again, uh security lights will also be included in the proposal as well as those ballard lights along the po- pathways. Um all fixtures will ultimately meet the city man's, the need is proposed di- dark side ordinance. Uh in accordance with sheet G three dot zero three of the submitted materials. So um we did, if you noticed in the packet, there was a bunch of, one of the sheets showed the lighting types. And even though the dark sky ordinance has not been fully adopted, uh the applicant intends to follow that ordinance anyway. Okay. Number eight, compatibility. All new commercial mixed-use buildings and exterior alterations shall be designed. Consistent with the architectural context in which they're located. Standards. Is met when the designer review board finds that all criteria below A through C are met. So we have to make sure that. That you all feel like all these criteria met. There's compatibility and building size between new and existing commercial and mixed-use buildings. The shape, size, and scale of those structures are architecturally compatible with the site and with the village character of the surrounding neighborhood. Particular attention will be paid to addressing the visual impact of structures or residential uses that are adjacent on or on the opposite side of the same street. All buildings in development shall provide human scale. The design avoids monolithic expanses of frontages. And roof lines diminishes the massing of buildings by breaking up building sections. And or by use of such elements as visual planes, projections, bays, dormers, second-floor setbacks, or changes in the roof line. And or similar features generally shown in the following figure. Figures in the ordinance, I didn't put it in the presentation. If we need to pull up, we can. Uh changes in paint color and features that are not designed as permanent architectural elements such as display cabinets, window boxes. Retractable or cinema-mounted awnings or canopies and all of this, and all the features will not independently satisfy this criteria. So they have to be permanent things. Uh in terms of findings for that, the applicant notes that the building size is comparable and compatible with structures and neighboring properties. Uh the analysis indicates the design within the zoning codes, height limitations, and F A R restrictions. The roof forms and scale of the structure are compatible with adjacent properties. Uh the standing c-metal roof forms and vertical cedar wood siding fit with neighboring buildings and have similar characteristics. The design avoids uh creating monolithic structures by using canopies, uh material changes and contrasting sliding around entries. And multiple pathways connecting the site between both structures and the parking lot. Uh staff finds the improvement consistent with the intent of the design standard. While not an architectural match with surrounding structures, design, and finish in general compatible with the, are generally compatible with these structures that are adjacent. Alright. Section four point one five eight includes performance insurance, including the building permit required. As a, and time limitation. So uh basically, there are administrative requirements applicable to both the city. And applicant. So they have to basically get building permits. Uh and meet their timelines, but that's something that's done at administrative level later, but it's mentioned in the design review criteria, so I had to put it in the staff report. Okay. So, we've gone through the criteria and the design review. Um now I kind of want to go through the recommendations and condition of approval. So I've gone through and made some recommendations that I'm hoping um you will all feel are. Are correct. So staff finds the proposal can comply with the applicable design review criteria and recommends planning commission approval, subject to the following conditions. So the first condition is the developer must demonstrate or construct. On constructing and construction documents prior to issuance of building permits. Site obscuring vegetation on the west boundary of the southwest parking lot. The site obscuring vegetation is intended to replace the fence to meet the screening requirements. Abertury to vegetation shall be no less than five feet tall within the planting area. So this is getting back at that fence versus the vegetation. We wanted to make sure it was in there as a condition, so it's, it made sure that that occurs. Second one, B, the developer shall submit a building permit for construction of the building. Conforming to the applicable building code requirements. The submitted site plan shall. Substantially conform to approved layout while the building plans may be simultaneously submitted with engineering plans. Building permits shall not be issued until all engineering plans are reviewed and approved. So if, if uh. The design review board decides that that they meet all the criteria, they still have to go through the permitting and building process. So there'll be a zoning permit as well as a building permit. Prior to receiving the building permit, the developer shall submit evidence of utility and driveway permit. So those are additional permits that'll need to be uh gathered. Prior to receiving a building permit, the developer shall submit evidence of utility and driveway permit. Sorry, I got that one in there twice. Uh prior to occupancy, the developer shall compete, complete the following. Install and or extend the public facility improvements consistent with. Uh city and or Nahalem Bay wastewater. Agency and approved engineering plans and install parking improvements consistent with approved building and engineering plans. Uh the structure shall also comply with the building permit requirements and substantially conform to the submitted site plan. The applicant. Is advised that substantial modifications to the approved plan may require a new design review application and decision. So if we get to the point where there's substantial changes during the permitting process. It could be sent back to you all for an additional design review. Um compliance with these conditions, uh the requirements of Manzanita zoning ordinance, Nahalem Bay wastewater agency, Nahalem Bay fire and rescue, Tillman County environmental health. Uh applicable building code provisions shall be the sole responsibility of the developer. So that's it. So I guess we are to the point where I'm gonna ask you at the end of our discussion. To either approve the application, adopting the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. You can approve the application, adopting modifications to the findings and or conditions. Or you can deny the application uh and establish findings as to why the application fails to comply with the decision criteria. Uh and that is it. I'll stop showing my screen. And we can have our discussion now. Karen, I don't know, I think it's probably you, you can lead this discussion and I will be here for questions.
Thank you.
Chris will be available as well.
Okay, um we're at the point now where uh it's up to commissioners to address questions to applicant or to staff. And then we'll follow that um by uh comments or questions from the public. So let's start. Is there, or is there a commissioner who has a list of questions as long as mine? That wants to go first? Okay, go ahead and unmute yourself, Bert, and I saw your hand go first.
Yeah, I'll, there, uh. First, really terrific, very exciting, you know, uh really. Great job, and I just have some kind of detail questions. And I'll start with the site first, and I I was a little confused. Uh the site on the project is considered the entire site, including all the uh farmer's market area is kind of what I. Graphs. And uh on one uh sheet, uh it describes that the uh. Site requirements uh for landscaping is about eleven thousand or twelve thousand square feet. And but the site plan demonstrates, you know, that in order to comply with the requirements, the whole site's used. And my primary question is, would it make more sense to just illustrate what the required landscaping is? So that the rest of the site doesn't get encumbered in some way. Uh for uh future development of farmer's market area for better farmer's market facility or whatever it wants to be. That's the first question. Uh maybe, maybe you can answer that one for me.
Sure, I I'll, I'll start, and I don't know if, if Leila wants to jump in too, but I I guess my main point was that. Just the area. That's the, in the ten-foot setback in front of the um. In front of the building, in front of the City Hall, actually meets that requirement, the total landscaping requirement.
Well, that, that's only so, it says it's only seventy-five hundred square feet on one of the sheets, though.
Yeah, and and that's all that's, it's required because it's twenty-five percent. Of the entire area. So I, that was the point I was trying to make is. But I see what you're saying. You don't want the, if you want, if something else wants to happen in the future. We don't want to encumber it by saying, well, that was supposed to be intended to be landscape area for the approved. Uh city halls, is that reasonable?
I think that's, uh provides more flexibility for the city, but I just want to make sure you got your numbers correct.
Okay.
I think somewhere else, uh uh actually on your uh sheet or on the sheet that had the uh. You know, the calculations, and I. Don't remember what sheet that was.
Okay. Well, how about this? How about if I make sure that I, I will make, I will, I can put that as a condition? Uh. In the report to make sure that we make those numbers are, make sure those numbers are correct.
Okay, that, that sounds good. You know, just kind of sort that out and. Cause I think there's some discrepancies there in the numbers. The other, uh I had two other questions and it relates to. Uh one of the sheets uh that showed a future storage area. Uh and uh. And so maybe uh. Uh yeah, what, what happens with that? I mean, do, do we worry about that in terms of screening and lighting and. Fences and all that kind of stuff. Uh it's, is that gonna be just uh equipment out there in the open or? You know, so I think clarifying that would be in order. Uh to make sure that we don't have uh so- some confusion there. And then the landscape plan. Uh which uh on like the civil plan, I think there's kind of a gravel road that comes off of uh. Division. And then on the landscape plan, it indicates that that would be uh. Uh. Planted, I guess. Yeah, with some grasses and it speak, somewhere else it speaks to northwest for, or just forest grass. So I think that it's just not very clear what all the intent of all that is. Uh any comment on that? Is the plan to? Uh. Put that in with lawn or? I'm just not clear on that one.
I I can try to address that if, if that helps.
Yeah.
Um. I think broadly, the, the approach has been to. Um to limit the kind of planted shrubs uh and tree area to the areas immediately around the building. And that's both for, you know, obvious, you know, cost, but also maintenance reasons. But because we are repairing the site essentially, uh you mentioned this area off of division. That would be uh re- replanted with lawn. So. Uh the intent is really to concentrate the planting beds with shrubs and and uh frinials, things like that. Close to the building and then treat the rest as if it. You know, if, as if that, that, that driveway wasn't there previously, it was just part of the open park scape.
Got it, okay. Uh and then.
Then the, the shed, I can address that one.
Okay, the future, future storage.
What I, what I would say would be is if that would be another permit. If that was gonna have to come in, so they would have to apply for another permit if that's was gonna have to happen. So likely, depending on the size, it may actually have to have a design review, but it would definitely have to go through staff's. Uh staff's hand through, through a zoning and building permit.
Okay, alright, that sounds good. Uh and I'll, I'll sit on the site here for a second and then let others speak, and then I have some other comments, but. Uh the screening requirements, uh uh number four. Uh it, it doesn't seem like the uh, uh two questions. Uh one, it seems like the compressors don't meet the requirement on the. North side of, of the police department. I wonder if, if that could be addressed either through landscape or, or, you know, some permanent screening. Uh because that's a really important view from, you know, the farmer's market area and stuff. Uh and then an additional related question is, since this is a, uh the police station's an essential uh facility. Will that have emergency power? And then if it does have emergency power, is that a generator and fuel tanks on the outside of the building, or how's that being handled?
Uh I can, the, the first question about the screening of the, the intent is. Uh to screen those, uh anything that's on the outside of the building will be screened either with landscape or with a kind of a. A fence-like kind of screen. Um and, and to your point, there's, there's two um. Uh pieces of equipment on the north side of the police station, and there's a couple other sprinkled around. So. Those will be, uh the intent is to address those with screening for sure. Um the emergency, there is going to be a generator and, and maybe Dan. I think Dan's here can talk a little bit of, about the generators, since I think the city is providing that.
The, the question I have is, is that stuff on the inside of the building, or is that gonna be public view? And then certainly, if it is. Out, then probably screening and stuff would want to happen there.
Yeah, right now, I think the generator is gonna be an, an outside generator. Um it'll be a, your standard one where the generator sits over top of the fuel tank, and there would be some type of screening. Be a vegetation or a physical screening like a, not a retaining wall, but like a lattice, something that makes it look ornate. But access.
Yeah, I think that, that probably wants to be a condition or something of the approval. Yeah. I'll let others talk, Karen.
Okay, I was just gonna say I would also second that notion that a condition of approval would require all equipment to be screened. Either by vegetation or um. Vegetation preferably, probably, rather than fencing of some sort, cause fencing doesn't stay nice for very long. Okay, uh John, you have your hand up. Do you want to unmute yourself and go next?
There, I think I'm unmuted now. Um first of all, again, uh compliments to Bearing. I think they did a great job. I, the, the. Building does uh, it, it looks relatively economical. Uh dividing it into two buildings was. Smart and probably also economical. Um and I do believe it um. Adequately, and in fact, uh does a good job of uh. Conforming to the residential neighborhood, uh or raise residential quality of uh. The area that it's located in. Um. Scott, just to be clear, um we are C one on the south. And both C one and R two on the east, if I understand that correctly. And then R two on the west and way up on the north. Did I get all that correct?
Leila, can you help me out with that? I thought it was all C one.
Yeah, so I have a zoning map in front of me. So the homes that flank the northern portion of the side are in the C one. So all those lots to the north are actually C one. All the lots to the east are C one. And then to the west across um.
Division.
Division Street is R two. So you're close.
Okay. I guess um since the building does such a, a good job of. Relating to the vernacular of the town itself, and surprisingly, uh historically, but certainly um. More recently. Um. Why would we pu- and the only part of. Our adjacency. That is truly residential is to the west. Why would we put the parking lot on the southwest side of the site? When the building itself, if it were to the west. Um. Does such a good job of fitting in. So um. I, I would propose that as a condition of approval, we move the southwest parking lot to the east side of the site and slide everything west. Um for what it's worth. I'll throw it out there for discussion.
One, uh one of the reasons that it is where it is. Has a little bit to do with uh the. Approach to the building and the uh the visibility of that public uh. Uh parking from the folks working in the building. And trying to separate out kind of the police entrance. And staff uh from the public side. So that was the thinking there, that if we, if we essentially put everything to the east. Then both are gonna be kind of parking essentially in the same. Area, and the, the idea of separating those uses was, seemed to be preferred during the conversations we had.
I can probably come up with two or three good reasons to do what you did. But I think in terms of. You know, the, the, first of all, as much as we would like to think our new site here is the heart of the city. The reality is the city's to the southwest, um. And most of the approaches is gonna be coming from the southwest, and it would be nice if as you approached this site. Either on Division or from Manzanita Avenue, if the first thing you saw was our new city hall. Uh, and not the parking lot. Again, I'm giving you my thoughts, it's probably not grounds for denying anything, I'm just, uh, throwing it out there for discussion.
Yeah, if I could offer a couple of thoughts, and I appreciate the comment and the feedback, um, I just wanna concur with Chris's. Sort of addressing about separating the lot and also trying not to create a giant monolithic parking lot was another thing, sort of breaking up. The, um. The lot itself. Um, it also, you know, as you mentioned, folks from the community will be coming likely from the south or the west and. Um. The approach by having all those, I think, uh, spots off of. One entry, um, could be problematic. We are at a point too in the design where redesign like that would have significant cost impacts, um, we would actually have to go back and. Significantly redesign, um, we are very close to, uh, we finished design development, we're well into construction documentation. So I think there would have to be a supremely compelling reason to, to move that at this stage. I think that the screening that's being proposed as part of this will help, uh, ameliorate some of that concern. The, um, also, we consider too, the. Kind of where parking currently occurs with respect to vendors and others that are using that site for events, and it does happen on. The southwest side, so we did a number of different looks at how and where we could place. The building, um, there's also the matter of utilities coming into the space, so a lot of those utilities will be coming in. On Division Street and crossing into the site, uh, the electrical, the water. Um, and other, and the sanitary sewer comes in there, so there's practical reasons why the building was placed in that area. So I guess I just would, would say that, um, I think that. You know, a big parking lot is going to be, um. No one wants that on their side, uh, one could argue probably the same thing for the eastern side as well, so I think. Um, you know, we have worked really hard to find the most efficient. Placement of the building on the site and to do our best to mitigate. Uh, the impacts of the parking lot itself, um, so just. Just a few comments to add to the conversation.
Um, okay, Frank, do you wanna? And are you unmuted? Okay, go for it.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, uh, sort of tag on to John's conversation. About approaching from the direction that he talked about, I think once that vegetation is mature. It's gonna be a beautiful view driving up, you won't see the building, you won't, I mean, you'll see the building above the vegetation. But once that matures, I think you're gonna have a really nice view coming in. Uh, from that angle. And I'll tell you, uh, when you said no fence, I was, that was like, oh, great, because who wants to see a big ugly fence? You know, surrounding a big giant parking lot, I think the vegetation is gonna be fantastic. And that view coming up, it's gonna look very natural, and I don't, I don't see that as a concern really at all. Especially after hearing that we'd have to go back to the drawing board and go through all of the hoopla, uh, forget about it.
Okay, uh, who wants to go next? Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, um, one thing that would also address John's concerns is if the parking lot were smaller. Uh, which brings me back to a point that. Uh, I, I raised earlier, I think, um, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the design. Um, I, I think both were great, I look forward to. Um, the new city hall, um, it's all very exciting. I don't have any concerns about the drive, the design except for the amount of parking, which I wish was smaller. Um, and I'm concerned too that we are. Requiring that much parking because of some generic standards for commercial buildings and not because we think that this structure. For what it's gonna be used for. Um, requires that much, um. And I certainly don't think we should be. Building so much parking to serve the greatest conceivable gathering on site. Uh, that principle which is guided development throughout this country is the reason why we have. Way too much parking everywhere. Um. Ten parking spaces for every car in this country. Uh, I think that we should try and figure out what we actually need. And even if you haven't done a study, we do have the example of. The farmer's market, which, you know, every Friday in season, a whole bunch of people gather in that space and. They do it without. This parking there now. Um, we should diminish it if it's. In any way possible, to, uh, make it more visual pleasing to approach the site, to have less. Impervious surface, to make the whole thing more pedestrian friendly and, and, and this too. In the future, I'm hoping that we reduce our parking requirements throughout the city. For commercial buildings, and it will probably be harder for us to. To do that if we, the city ourselves in building our own structure. Uh, are overparked. So, um, I, you know, if we need a variance, I don't know, I'm sorry to say, cause I'm still new to this. Commission, what that all entails, but if it is at all possible for us to. Diminish the number of parking spaces. On this site. Without too much expense delay. Uh, consternation for all involved, I would hope that we could do that.
Well, I totally agree with you, I'm, I'm always on the side of less parking, and I do think we have built too much parking. Un- unfortunately, as the design review board. Um. We really don't look at anything that the, the, the zoning code. Allows as part of this process, doing, doing strictly design review. Because, um, we have to, if, if the project meets all the underlying zoning code regulations, which parking being one of them. Um, then that's, that's allowed outright as, as a, as part of the application, so. Um, I totally appreciate your concern and desire to, to, to want to do that, it would have to be. Uh, it can't, I, I guess what I'm saying is it can't be something that we put as a condition of use to reduce parking. Through the design review process, it would have to be something that the applicant, the city would, um, choose to do themselves.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in here, thanks Scott, and, and thank you, Tom, I appreciate that you're bringing up this. I think what will be a very important discussion that we will have with the comprehensive plan. And, um, the changes that will be coming with that, with respect to the ordinances. I did want to just quickly go over, um, the requirements for a variance, and I don't believe that even if. We had wanted to, um, which there was actually quite a bit of discussion around parking, we tried to be creative in our. Uh, interpretation of what that looked like. Um, and this is where we are, which is meeting the minimum requirements. Um, circumstances for granting a variance are very narrow, and they're typically focused on. Things like extraordinary circumstances that apply to the property as a result from lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances. Over which the owners of the property have no control. The second, the net variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right. Of applicants substantially as the owners of the other property in the same zone, so somebody else was able to do something. And we're not able to, it affects our property rights, we could argue for that, um, that's not the case here. The variance would not be ma- materially detrimental to the purpose of the ordinance, the comprehensive plan. To a property in the same zone or vicinity in which the property is located. Or otherwise conflict with the objectives of the city, any city policy, um. And then finally, the variance request is the minimum variance which will alleviate the hardship. Um, so it's, it's a really narrow definition as most variance requirements are. And I don't believe that had we, um. Had the option to apply for it, that we would have been able to successfully argue, um, for any of those. I did wanna note that the design team did maintain a number of those parking spaces. Um, the eight and the twenty-five, um. Parking lot, and then I think Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a handful of staff parking lot too, that are gravel, as indicated on the site plan, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
As a way to help, um, reduce the impermanence of that lot. Um, with the expectation that potentially in the future, if, if, if we are able to manage with less, we, we can, and that, that doesn't sort of. Obligate those spaces for use, I believe, um, the planning commission does have. The flexibility to allow, require, recommend, um, that more of those spaces be. Um, in the less permanent type of, um. Condition, so we're, we're proposing a significant number be asphalted, you can tell us otherwise. So I did wanna highlight that, I do wanna recognize, respect and appreciate that conversation. Um, but I'm afraid I, I don't think that we would have had, um. A good chance to get that, and I think if we had, um, you would have seen a variance request, uh, before you. Thank you.
Um, Frank, you still have a hand raised, do you have more?
I, I put it back up.
Okay, alright.
Okay, um.
Let's see, Phil had, let me, let me go to Phil and Lee first, um, and then we'll.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we get everything out on the table before we start whittling down. What we're gonna do. Um, Phil, do you wanna, do you have questions or concerns?
Uh, uh, I, I have a couple of questions, um. With regards to ingress, egress of the two parking lots, were there any, was there any thought with? Regards to traffic control devices, uh, signs, et cetera, uh, restricted turning. Um, Manzanita Avenue is, uh. Heavily trafficked, traveled. And, um, Classic Street, um, has traffic, uh. Both for the grocery store across the street and the bank, so I'm concerned about. And, and a lot of people use Manzanita Avenue as a. Main thoroughfare to head down towards the beach and or reach destinations within Manzanita. So I guess what I'm concerned about is, uh. How much of an impact we're gonna add, uh. With regards to these two parking lots. Uh, that's, that's what, that's one issue, um, and I'll let you go ahead and respond, or I can go on.
I think that's, that's up to you, whenever you prefer, Phil.
Okay, uh, on sheet G two O one, um, there's a reference to a. Risk four and a risk two. With regards to this, two separate buildings, the police station and the city hall, and, um. I guess my question is, is. Is there any particular, um. Glazing that's gonna be required in order to meet risk four and risk two, because we have a lot of windows. That are, uh, fairly close to groundwater.
So I can try to answer that for you, the, the risk category four is purely a structural code. Uh, and it, it has to do really ultimately in this case primarily with the foundation that the building is sitting on.
Okay.
And one, and one of the reasons we separated them out is the, the, given the soils on the site. The foundations for the risk category four portion of the building are enormously expensive, so. We kind of detached those just for that reason, but it.
Yeah, I understand, so, um. I, I, again, the, the glazing, uh, of the window still applies with. What I'm worried about is entry into the police station and entry into, uh. Areas that would be normally restricted within city hall. From the outside.
Uh, do you mean, do you mean in, in the, in terms of during?
Breaking, break it, breaking and entering.
Sure, sure, but do you mean after a seismic event, or do you mean at any time?
I mean at any time.
Yeah, so, uh, we have spent a lot of time with the police, uh, chief and his folks, kind of looking at the building. The, the, within, uh, the building itself. There are discreet, uh, environments for both evidence, uh, the armory itself. Uh, some storage areas where the, where everything is kept that are secure, and there are not really, uh, accessible. Those are kind of all landlocked pieces.
Okay.
So, the, uh, there has been some thought about that, there's definitely a, a whole layer of security that we haven't really got into about the building. Um, both, both technology and kind of design placement that we've been. Kind of working hand in hand with, uh, with the police chief and others, if that helps.
Another, another question for you, uh, again on sheet A, uh, G two O one. There is a, a small closet type space. Uh, opposite of. The business area at the police station, but it isn't identified as to what that space is, do you have any idea what? I can't hear you.
Sorry about that, I muted myself, um, uh, I, I don't have the drawing right in front of me, but my recollection based on what you're talking about, that, that's really just a. Like a, that's gonna, just a closet, storage closet for them.
Alright, good, good enough, thank you, um. This, I know you've, you've already talked about the fact that the restrooms are, uh. Designed to be handicap accessible, but there are two restrooms. At the city hall, uh, that are, uh, opposite the assembly area that are not shown with any. Handicap hardware at all. Um, and I don't know whether that's just an oversight, or if this is gonna be an add or what.
Oh, it's, it's just not, the drawings that we submitted for the land use review are not the same as the permit drawings, those will be fully. Accessible, as will all the bathrooms in the space.
Okay, then a couple of que- gen- general questions for you, um. How is the building going to be supplied with H, HVAC, and where is it gonna be located? Is it gonna be located in the attic?
Uh, it's a mix, but yeah, there's, there's, uh, it's heat pumps and fan coils, there's. Uh, we can certainly provide you with all those drawings if you'd like to have a look at them.
No, I just, I just wanna know where they're, where they're gonna look.
Well, it, there's, there's some outdoor units that I think are dr- uh, called out on the site plan sheet. Um, uh, but, and then there's a fair amount of it in the attic space.
Okay. Uh, then on, um. Do you anticipate any, uh, additional mechanical equipment, uh, or, uh, vents? Louvers, et cetera, that are not shown on the elevations or the roof plan? They're currently.
Uh, no, I mean, there will probably be some vents that are not showing up on the roof stack, like plumbing vents. Um, there is, uh, at the garage end, there is a louver, and we're in the process of kind of, uh. Right sizing that and designing it, um, with our team, but no- nothing significant, no.
Okay, alright, um, I know you've talked about, uh. Contailing the water runoff, but I am concerned about the fact that, uh, there, there's a possibility of, of the water. Of the water ponding between, around the buildings and between the two structures. Is that going to be addressed through uh grades in uh topography or?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, there will be a full uh grading plan as part of the permits the middle uh. That, you know, will address all of that, correct?
Okay. Alright, that's uh, that's all I had.
Okay, um, Lee, do you want to go next?
Sure, be- I had several questions before we started today. But between Chris and Scott and my fellow commissioners. They've been answered or clarified, so I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Frank, you want to do as?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and. Uh, admittedly very sensitive when it comes to parking issues, being the owner of Wandas. It's, it's always a challenge. Um, but for example, the parking lot that we were discussing about downsizing has twenty-eight spaces. There are twenty-five of us in this meeting right now. Two of those spaces are handicap, so that would be a full parking lot. Just wanted to make note of that.
Um, okay, I've, I've got my list then if, if you don't mind. Um, first of all, I appreciate leaving all of the mature trees um on the site. I, I really appreciate that. Um, I, my questions are in no particular order because I write all over the page. Um, you say there's some anticipated exterior seating. Is that just the benches along the, on the, the Manzanita's um side? Or the south side of the building?
Cor- correct, yeah. We will have some benches out front, essentially outside of the front door and the council chamber area. And I think we're proposing some in the, the back area kind of off of the staff break room. So that staff might have a place to sit outside and eat their lunch.
Okay, so uh when I first read the um report, it said that. The floor area ratio was point zero. Point zero six five, and I read that as six five and it's, how is it well under, but? So the rest of my questions related to floor area ratio are moot. Um, are you intending to um underground all the utilities? So there won't be any poles and wires and stuff everywhere? That's a yes?
Uh, sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a, a note, um. I, I would recommend using something other than coast pines next to the building. Um, because they're so shallow rooted, they blow down and I would hate to have one take out this beautiful building. That's just a, that's just a point. Um, the signage, uh, in some of the illustrations, there's a standard. Um, just a monument sign. Uh, in kind of the front and to the west of the sidewalk. Is that generally where that sign will be placed?
Uh, that, that is where our current thinking is, yeah. And, and to be. To be honest, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that. I know the city's in the process of. Uh, I, I believe the city's in the process of looking at their, their kind of logo, et cetera, if I have that right. So we've kind of just put a placeholder spot for a monumental sign. Uh, and haven't done much else about it. I know it'll require a separate permit.
Right, um, so you have decisions on, on the material or lighting of that sign at this point? Okay.
No, and I do want to note actually that there's a specific exemption for city um for signs. So I think that was in the staff report, but I did want to clarify that we won't be coming back for a permit for that. It'll be um. It'll, once we get a little further down the line. And I also do want to point out too that it may be a cost. Uh, thing we end up dealing with. So the sign may end up being affixed to the building. That ends up being more cost effective for us, but we just didn't have the information right now to share. Um. But that, that will, just so that we're all clear, that there's an exemption for uh the municipal body to not have to.
I'm just thinking about how the pla- how the building will look overall. And so that's why I'm asking that question. I'm also um questioning. I imagine that you're going to have some directional signage places. Are you going to have a sign saying staff parking, you know, that kind of thing? Okay. Um, do you anticipate uh gravelling the right of way on Manzanita Avenue? Or will the, um. I, I, I guess I'm just wondering about, will there be a delineation between street and lawn?
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll try to answer that. We've had a lot of conversations about that since there are no sidewalks on. Manzanita Avenue, as I'm sure you're aware. Um, the. Yeah, or anyone. But I think the plan now is to kind of use the standard gravel edge, but we're looking at ways to kind of. Edge there, and I think that's still kind of in process. So we're, we've got a nice clean edge uh that the, the. The plant, the, the grass in that area would kind of die up again, so. Um, it's.
Great, that, that answered my question. Thanks. Um, let's see. I still want to think about screening on the east side um of the building where if it's. If the building itself is going to impact. The two or three residences that are back there. I would love to see some kind of screening, um, just to be good neighbors, especially if people are going to be using the parking lot at night. And lights might be. Directed into those. Uh, as people are getting out of the parking area. That's, I mean, we can, I just want to put that on your. I'm not going to make that, I wouldn't want, want to make that a condition, but I would love to see that just as a good neighbor thing, since we're not required to do it. Um, and then I wonder about um the lighting. Um, from the open field in the back to the restroom area. Will that be, there be bollard lighting all along those sidewalks?
Uh, currently, we're showing the bollards uh running east, west along the, the path. Uh, kind of between the buildings. Out to the parking lot sidewalk, but that's, that's the extent of it in that zone.
Okay.
So we're not running them up.
From the sidewalk on the north side of, is there a sidewalk on the north side?
Uh, there is a sidewalk on the, uh, sorry, the south side of the building, uh, between Manzanita Avenue and the building. There's one between essentially the city hall portion and the police portion. And then there's a sidewalk that runs kind of north, south along the east side of the parking lot.
Okay, just as far as the end of the parking lot.
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. You've answered my questions. Uh, okay, I think, let me just double check. Yeah. Okay. Yep. Alright, uh, any other questions from the commission to the applicant or to staff? Before we, okay, go ahead, Bert. Unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, well, once again, I want to just say how terrific this building is, and I'm very excited about it. And uh, material selections and stuff like that are just really fitting in great to Manzanita, so excellent job. Uh, I, I have one suggestion and uh, uh, would be uh. I do really appreciate John's comment about the building location. And my first impression was, yeah, you'd always put the building on that corner, but then remembering my uh. Police stations that I've done in the last uh, uh, few decades is you always have to separate the police and the public. And uh, and so I think this is a good solution uh on how, how to solve that issue. Uh, it gets uh, it, any kind of uh security issues uh away from the public in a good spot. And so I think uh, uh, the separation uh for the uh issues with seismic, all that's really great. So I appreciate that. My one suggestion would be uh, it, it is uh. Manzanita is a kind of a busy street and, and, and we are asking everybody to kind of. At least walk to the parking lot and then, you know, kind of get into the building through the driveway. Or from Manzanita to the entry. And a suggestion would be uh to maybe slide the west, if you could put the. Uh, site plan up, or I can put a site plan up. Uh, with a sh- a screen share. Anyway, my suggestion is to slide the western parking lot back just a little bit. To be kind of aligned with where the uh it is on the east and then create a sidewalk. That would just be an extension of that uh existing sidewalk and get it out. Over to Division and Manzanita. And I think that would be a, a more gracious way for people to walk from town. Uh, to arrive at the uh, and probably a safer way uh to get to the entrance of the building. Uh, and I think you can just take the parking lot and slide it back. And then extend the sidewalk uh over to Division and Manzanita. And that would also probably provide a little bit of landscape between the sidewalk and the parking lot, just to make that all. Feel more gracious and, and probably safer to kind of get from uh town. So that's my suggestion.
Would you be okay with the section that's from the parking lot to Division being a nice gravel path?
I think that would be fine too, you know, we, we do, you know, we do have to recognize people have mobility issues and stuff, so. But yeah, I'd be okay with that. Um, you could also maybe steal the paving from the. Uh, south part of the. Uh, staff parking there. On the four spaces and maybe take that and move it over, if you see kind of what I'm talking about. Anyway, I think, I think that would be a more gracious entry and then, you know, people would be able to. Kind of get into the city hall in a better way and, and. Announce, announce it a little bit better than it is announced uh at the moment from town. And I, I know you've got budget issues, so. But uh, yeah, this is, this will be our one shot.
Okay, um, I just want to call attention to the fact that it's five forty-five. Um, and we still have some questions, I imagine, from members of the public. And I also want to just remind everybody that what, what we're doing is evaluating the design that we have in front of us. And whether it meets the criteria. And I know that the suggestions sometimes are helpful, but unless it's. We intend it to be a condition of approval. I, I think suggestions maybe. Well, I, I made one myself on the landscaping, so never mind. Sorry, I can't help it. Um, okay, any other questions from the commission? Uh, John, is your hand still up?
Yeah, my hand was still up and I, first of all, I'd like to second what Bert just said. Um. I think it, it, it is a good. You know, kind of compromise solution. And just to throw one more of your little uh suggestions into the pot. If we could afford a little more gravel, maybe extend the north-south um sidewalk adjacent to the parking lot. To the north, um, maybe as far as the future public storage, just so that the. People from the. Whatever gatherings we have uh on the north side of the site can get down and into the uh. Restrooms there. But other than that, again, I'd like to uh compliment the architects on the job they did. Notwithstanding the parking lot location, which I don't think would be a grounds for denying it anyway, so. Um, good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Karen, we can't hear you.
There we go. I clicked my button twice instead of once to unmute, so I, I apologize. Um, I don't see any more hands raised from commissioners. So um, I would like to open it um first of all to any. Uh, members of the public who would like to speak in favor of the proposed development.
And Karen, I have a couple hands raised. Um, Michael Garner, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Thank you. Um, I just had a quick question about the two separate parking lots. This, what I think is referred to as staff, but the police parking lot. Um, portion, is that restricted parking?
There will be during office hours, so, and because our police will be parking back there, um. During business hours, that will be kind of restricted parking. But during events and other times during off hours, I don't see any reason why it can't be used for, for public parking.
Okay, the only reason I ask is if all of the parking requirements are met. Um, if it is restricted parking. And then secondly, um. I just wanted to add my comment about the total number of parking spaces. I would really encourage everything to stay as it is because um. Uh, contrary to some people's thinking, the parking for farmer's market and other activities there. Is an absolute disaster. Um, people park for blocks along the street. And it creates an incredible pedestrian safety hazard with people walking down the street. So at least now there'll be some parking on site for those types of activities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we got a couple more hands up, Karen.
Okay, let them, let them go. First, anybody wanting to speak in favor, I, that's really what we're looking for, just to make sure that we. Don't get too far afield. So go ahead, Scott, let's, let someone speak.
Okay, Michael Brockman, uh, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. Uh, thank you for the, the time today. Uh, I'm, my wife and I are the owners of uh one of the buildings that's directly across uh the street to the south. Uh, the small house that's uh right on Manzanita Avenue at six forty-four or six four-four Manzanita. Uh, we observed that there is already a constant flow of foot traffic along Manzanita Avenue. And looking several years into the future, I believe that. Manzanita Avenue, like Lenada, will ultimately need public sidewalks up and down its entire length. Or certainly around this area surrounding the new city hall. Uh, I really want to applaud the new design that I see here. Uh, so fine work to Scott and this entire committee and everyone involved. Um, I think that the new, a new sidewalk will need to be in addition to walkways. To and from the building entrances that you already have in the design shown today. I don't believe I see any space that would allow for the addition of sidewalks along the street in the future. So it might be advisable to move the entire design, say, eight feet to the north. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that and thank you for the opportunity to, to comment.
Thank you for the comment. Um, oh, I'm just saw something from Lee. You need to leave now, now, Lee?
About fifteen more minutes, Karen.
Okay, thanks. Um, go ahead and exit yourself. Um, when you need to.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Scott, you want to?
Yep, we have. Uh, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Cool. I just, I wanted to uh echo Michael's thing about. Future sidewalks necessary. I know that's outside the scope of this. Um, and of course, the parking. Um. At the very least is what it should be. Remember, we have primarily older populations here. Uh, may not actually be footing it to Underhill or the future city hall. And remember that the planning commission required steeplejack last year. To have the full complement of parking spaces. So we need to be consistent with requirements for parking spaces, I think, to be fair. And then jumping all the way to fire danger, the act, I know that. Fire danger, the act, I know that cedar siding is sexy. But it burns. I would urge, it's cheaper cement siding, I know. Um. But this goes with landscaping as well that. It should be as per California, at least five feet from the base of the building and. If, in fact, this is going to be an emergency center. And fire is probably our greatest statistical danger. We need to build for that. Um. So that's pretty much it, and I'm all for this. Go for it. Thank you.
Okay, Karen, I've got one more hand if you're ready. Now, Randy, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, members of the commission and for the presentation this evening. Appreciate that very much. A lot of clarification and questions answered. And I think that's all great. I did want to follow up on a line of inquiry that Commissioner Mannan. Uh, brought up and prompted some questions in my mind. Uh, specifically with the police building itself, I would note that the press, the uh. Uses of the space of the police building several months ago contained. More detail than the application material that we have tonight. Commissioner Mannan uh identified a few of those areas. So I have a couple of brief questions. Hopefully, the architect or someone on staff can answer. There is no indication of where the shower and decontamination area for the police officers in this new. Design floor plan is going to be located. Is there someone that can identify where that area will now be?
Um, I'm I'm going to ask you to take that question um offline. Um, and pose that elsewhere. What we're looking at is, we're really restricted to the design review, the the. The exterior of the building. And how it looks and how it fits in the neighborhood. And um, it's not our responsibility to look at. The interior that's that's left to architects, engineers. And other and building codes. So, uh, did you have another question, Randy? Something else?
Well, no, I simply brought it up because the subject was broached by the commissioner and I thought this would be a good forum to get some of those questions answered. Rather than to have me independently pursue it. So again, I took that as an opportunity to uh let the committee. And the rest of the citizens watching follow up on some of that line of inquiry, but uh that's the way you would prefer to do it. I can certainly do that, Karen.
I I appreciate it, Randy. I was just going to mention that some of Phil's questions also were um. Uh, outside the bounds of what we were doing here today. And I didn't interrupt him because I didn't know how many questions he had, so. Um, but thank you. Thank you for the comment and um I hope that we can get an answer to you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yep. Uh, any other hands raised? Um, I would like to offer an opportunity then to um. Chris, to add any rebuttal or anything that you feel like we need to clarify?
Uh, not on my end, really. I appreciate everybody taking the time and all of your uh comments. I think there's a lot. There's a lot here for us to kind of chew on, but I think overall it seems like we're headed in a good direction and. I appreciate uh all the, all the thoughts.
Okay. Um, I'm going to try to wind this up um. In an expeditious manner. I've written a couple of notes. Um, one is that there were a lot of questions about screening. Of of equipment. Um, and I don't know if it's already listed as a. As a condition, but that any equipment needs to be screened according to. Um. Uh, according to our ordinance. So I would want to make sure that 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 happens. Um, there was a question about um bike park, bike parking. Is that something that needs to be conditioned or is that? Can we leave that as? Uh, maybe bike parking that would meet the upcoming TSP? Is that reasonable?
It's a good one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was there any other items that? Were critical?
You know, I would, I would suggest that to provide a uh a pedestrian pathway. To uh Division and Manzanita. And then how it's done can be figured out by the design team.
From Division to. The main, to the.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any discussion about that? Okay, any others? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I I uh I wanted to second that point. I thought that what Bert brought up earlier, I wouldn't make it a condition for approving the design, but. Uh, I think the idea of having a better pedestrian access. You know, to the entry to the building um. Across that, the parking lot driveway. Seems like a really good design idea, and if you could work it out somehow, that would be great.
Does that sound doable?
I agree with both of them.
Okay, without making that a condition, that's something that you will work on and attempt to accomplish.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, too.
Who said that? Oh, thanks, Chris. Okay, um, any other items? Is there anywhere that the commission feels that this application did not meet the requirements?
It's super.
Yeah, I'm I'm not hearing anything either.
No objections here.
Okay, um, then I would entertain a motion. If we could do one.
I I'd move to approve it uh with a few conditions.
Which are? Well, let me, let me back that up. Um, we also want to um approve the staff report.
Okay, I want to prove the staff report.
Cause that's, that's all the enumeration of what we're approving. Okay.
All right, uh, uh, I would say approve the staff report just to verify that the uh. Landscape uh requirement areas uh have been appropriately sized.
Okay.
Uh, and then I think uh the the other conditions would be uh uh. The uh. Uh, screening of mechanical equipment per city of Manzanita. Ordinance with a preference for landscape as opposed to fencing.
Okay.
And then to provide a pedestrian pathway from the main entrance to. Uh, Manzanita Avenue.
Okay.
I think that, I don't think there were any other conditions.
Bike, bike parking.
Oh, bike parking, yeah, to meet the new uh TSP ordinance uh. Or the uh goals of TSP uh ordinance in terms of bike parking.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? Oh, is there a second?
Oh, everybody's seconded.
The seconds, okay. Um, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Hey, I I I can't wait for this thing to get built. It's very cool. That's a good job, Chris.
Okay, yeah, I think you guys did a great job. Um. Uh, all in favor has been moved and seconded to approve the staff report with a handful of conditions. Uh, all in favor, say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
It looks unanimous. Great. Thank you so very much. Um, the only thing left to talk about, and Lee, if you need to go and get ready for your next meeting, feel free. We're just going to talk about what's coming uh next month.
Thanks, Karen.
We can catch you up on that.
I might also drop off if that's okay, unless you need me.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you very much, everybody. That was, um, we did it within two hours. I really appreciate it.
For the.
It's great. Um, what's coming up? What do we have in January besides um the transportation plan? Uh.
All we have on.
Ordinance changes.
Unless Leila has something else she'd like to throw in there.
Uh, no, no, just the TSP ordinance at this point, um. I did, if I may, um, we did finally, we being me, got the uh RFP, the request for proposals out for the comprehensive plan. So that's a big. It's a big deal. Um, it went out to through the state's procurement system Friday, it was posted to the city's website, um. And so, yeah, we're looking forward to going through that process um and getting someone on board and. Starting to work with the community and I think um it's going to be a whole lot of fun.
Yeah, so the proposal is on the city's website?
The RFP is posted on the city's website, yep.
Great. So I would encourage all of you to read it because it details in really granular detail the kinds of. Um, input that we're looking for. And so uh it also details some timelines roughly. And that I think will help us with our own planning for for our meetings.
Yeah, that's going to be a very um, probably comparatively to the last time we went through this process, um, there's going to be an extremely robust. Community engagement process, um, a firm believer that comp plan should be based on. Communities uh wants and desires. And so it's a big part of the project and then there'll be concurrent. Um, ordinance amendments with respect to the residential um housing code and and the uh. The contract or the RFP is written such that it'll be conducted in two phases with the idea that. Phase one being comp plan update and the residential ordinance amendments, because we know what those are from the state. And then if the selected consultant does a solid job for us. We're set up to keep them on board to actually do the implementation of the rest of the ordinance amendments, um. So, once we have kind of identified the scope and scale of those amendments, and I think there's going to be a great deal of efficiency. Built into that, um, because ideally that that consultant um will. You know, they'll be along with us for the ride for the comp plan, so they'll really understand what we're trying to achieve and then help translate that into ordinance language. And so. I think it's going to be a revolutionary thing for the city, both getting a community base, a truly community-based comp plan. And then really clear zoning ordinance that reflects that um vision. So I'm really excited. It's going to take a few years. So I gotta, gotta gear up for that, but that's what good um community planning takes and I'm I'm looking forward to uh. Getting that work kicked off. Um, the consultants have until mid-February to provide proposals, so we're giving folks ample time. To develop solid um thoughtful proposals and um. I think that will also help us get a good field of applicants into the, into the process, so I'm excited.
You know, I'm happy to see what number they come up with because the old uh. Uh, paper said that, what was there going to be seventeen hundred? The population was going to be seventeen hundred now, so what is it going to be? In ten years, five thousand? I'm like, what were they basing those numbers on? I'm like, gosh.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, I I also want to congratulate uh Leila for getting a grant to cover. This process.
Yay.
Um, so that was, that was work to get that and it was work to do the RFP and so now you can just relax, right?
Yeah.
While you're building a new city hall, which we've just approved the design for, so.
And then working on granite signage and everything else.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, um, shall we? Uh, adjourn the meeting? Bert, you have one?
Yeah, I think we should give a big kudos to uh uh Lila and the city staff, Scots, the two Scots, Dan. Uh, everybody and the city council for uh making this happen. And so a lot of work and it's really going to be a really good representation of the values and spirit of Manzanita. So I can't wait for it to get built. Very exciting.
Touche, touche.
Excellent.
You know.
All right, with that said, I'll adjourn the meeting and see you all in real life somewhere.
Happy holidays and have a great day.
You guys all have a. Have a happy holiday.
Happy holiday.
Well, all right.